And if um, Dejean will show and Ellie, Chief Heineken, Steve, if y'all will come up, Mayor Jacobson, I keep calling you mayor, you know I do that. Jeff Jacobs, the Councilman Jacobson. Okay, thank you very much. I'd like to call the order, the City of North Pole Regular Council Meeting for July 18, 2022 into session via Zoom. It is now 7:00 PM. And uh, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Keller.
Here.
Mr. Claus.
Here.
Mr. Kramer.
Here.
Mr. Skips.
Here.
Mrs. Welch.
Yep.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes, Luzimi is here.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, I'm here. Thank you very much. Um, Madam Clerk, would you lead us into the Pledge of Allegiance?
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and for all.
Thank you very much. This is Welch, an invocation and any special intentions. Go ahead.
May bow your head if you so please. Lord, we come before you tonight as the City Council, as we serve the people that we that elected us. We ask that you guide us in anything that we need to do for our city, the best interest of our citizens. We ask that you keep our first responders, our city workers of all types in your hand and guide them to do the best that they can do for our city. We also on this night uh, would like to recognize that there are some things in the world that are not quite right. We have some issues with people not acting kind and gentle towards each other as they should. Especially, we're thinking about the victims of the shootings in Highland Park. It has a special place in our heart because of some people that have connections back there. We ask especially for prayers for a little boy who lost both his parents uh, in that and all those people who are mourning and feeling the loss for those people. We ask that you guide everyone to see things, say things and and report stuff so that we can avoid having these kind of incidences. We ask just that you always keep all of us under your wing, guiding us uh, to do the right things. We ask this in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much. So we go to an action item number four. You'll find it on pages one and two for the approval of the agenda.
Mayor move to approve the agenda?
Who seconded?
I did.
Okay.
And Mayor move to amend the agenda by consenting item number A, Ordinance 2214, under Old Business.
Second.
Seconded, okay, motion made by Claus to uh, to take item A under Old Business and consent and seconded by Jacobson. Anyone uh, want to uh, object to that? Seeing no objection, make it so, Madam Clerk. We now have uh, uh, item A, Old Business Consent. We will discuss A and B under New Business. Next is the communications from the mayor. And uh, no, excuse me, approval of the minutes, item five. It's uh, from July 5th, 2022. You'll find it on pages three to nine. That is an action item.
Mayor uh, wish to uh, us to approve the minutes from the last meeting?
Second.
It skips.
Okay, motion by Welch, skip uh, skip seconded. Madam Clerk, call the question.
Uh, we need to vote on the agenda as well.
Oh, I thought we already had. I'm sorry. You're right. I forgot and went straight on. Coming through this too fast. Going back to item four, the approval of the agenda has been amended. Call the question, please.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Skips.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, does anyone wish to change your vote? I see no changes. So the motion now as amended there. And now we go to the approval of the minutes. And uh, who motioned that again, please?
I did.
Mrs. Welch motioned it and it was seconded by
Skips.
Skips, okay. Uh, so for the minutes from 7:52, Madam Clerk, would you please call the uh, roll on that, please?
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Skips.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Welch. Yes.
Mayor.
Yes. Does anyone wish to change? You see that? No one's changing. So the minutes from July 5th, 2022 are approved. Now we come to communications from the mayor. And so I'll go very quickly first through things that I know that are going on here. Uh, in our chambers right now, we are pretty much uh, trying to put it back together again. We do have a cart for a very nice car. As a matter of fact, I don't even know if I call a car a stand, a rollable stand for the big screen, 85-inch television to go on. That's a nice addition and parts are slowly coming in through Universal Alaska Productions. So we're we're very hopeful to have the uh, the total uh, uh, thing in here before Labor Day. That's where we're pushed at. Uh, we are also set uh, to put out um, our uh, furniture and everything on this Friday, the 22nd of the month. We will be uh, closing City Hall at 1:00. We won't have our computers or our telephones uh, because we're moving everything into the chambers. Planback will come out on the weekend between hopefully 9:00 in the morning and 6:00 in the evening, both on Saturday and Sunday, to put the new carpets in the fishbowl as well as in each of the offices. And we'll come back to work on uh, Monday. And uh, and that's the 26th of July to put together our uh, our offices with the furniture and all being moved back and setting up our computers and telephones. It's a very ambitious schedule. And I think with that, I'll say that just looking a little bit into the future, I may very well be going down to Anchorage August 9th through 12th. I'm not sure yet if I will, but uh, there's uh, things that I need to do down there with the University of Alaska, Anchorage, as well as General Crumb, Change of Command, the three-star. It's gonna have a change of command. He's he's, I don't know where he's heading to, who who, but I know someone's replacing him. So I may very well be part of that ceremony as well. So maybe gone from the city from August 9th and coming back August 13th. Only two things I can tell you that are coming up that you may want to apprise yourself of, and that's the AML Summer Legislative Meeting is in Sitka. That's August 10 through 12. So if you're intending to go, you need to go through the clerk to register and get your uh, your uh, airfare straightened out. And uh, be quite aware that the airfare may be sort of tedious going down with so many people that might be traveling to Sitka and back up through Anchorage. So be aware of that. So you may have to go down on the 9th, not come back home until the evening of the 12th or the morning of the 13th. So keep that in mind. The very last thing is out at uh, Chena Hot Springs is I think the 16th Annual 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 Energy Fair August 12th, 13th, 14th at Chena Hot Springs. So do keep that in mind. And we'll go now to presentation, item A. And I see that we have Mr. Gary Hutchison with us under item A, Presentation of the Annual Audit by Alliance CPAs. Gary? It's yours.
Hey, very good. Think I am unmuted. And I have for you the uh, financial statement for the City of North Pole, December 31st, 2021. So is that is that legible to all you folks?
Mr. Hutchison, I would suggest that you close that side panel, which would allow everything to be bigger.
You have a side panel that shows when you're
Your comment. There you go. Look at that. And you can even slide.
I like to use that little button here. So I might open it up from time to time.
You should already have access to your pen without that being opened, don't you?
Well, I'd like to. I'm I'm one of those things I haven't figured out. So.
Once you get used to something, yeah. Yeah. Thank you for expanding that, too.
All right, very good. I got it 125%. Does that look uh, okay for us?
Yes.
Yes.
So as we mentioned earlier, uh, this will be a presentation that folks focus focuses on the funds that the council use for management. The audit uh, well, here's here's the index for the thing. It's it's a it's the presentation is like a pyramid pyramid. The more condensed information is in the front and it's more information as you go through uh, with more detail on all the funds. And it Independent Auditor's Report is in clean opinion, no modifications or qualifications, which is the type of opinion that you want to have. And so we're going to get, I'm going to scroll pretty quickly, get past the business-type activities we discussed earlier. And here here is the uh, here is the uh, the general fund. I'm going to see what I can do here and bring this over so we can see the whole thing. So the uh, this is the balance sheet, the statement of of financial position of the uh, City of North Pole's General Fund, its debt service, which is its uh, its special assessments funds. These are capital projects funds that are uh, several of them that are lumped together, and these are non-major funds. So the these are with exclusion of the water and service sewer, and we'll see that in a bit. These are the major funds that are budgeted for. And the presentation basis is on the same basis as the budget. So most important thing to point out is the unassigned fund balance at the end of the year, 2.9 million. That's the amount of uh, net assets available to the city going forward into FY22 that you'd be able to appropriate out of. Uh, these are these are classifications of some debt debt uh, amounts that have been uh, appropriated from to fund balance with special purposes through uh, you know, the not the general fund, what we the general fund accounts that are capturing uh, maintenance and things of that nature. But this is the most important number here is this 2.9. What's available to appropriate FY22. Uh, cash is $3.8 million. Receivable 710. Most of this is sales tax. Counts payable. Here's your unspent COVID money at the end of uh, 123121. This is that second grant that you received. And here's healthcare payable. Right here, there's 280 and accrued liabilities. This is mainly accrued wages. So the general funds in strong position at the end of uh, FY21. Debt service are your special assessment funds. You can see those receivables are being paid down. There's you know, the the uh, Casell software, specialized receivable systems that count that account for the receivables and also the the deferred portion of that, which is 83,000. So it's pretty unique software for special assessment funds that's used by Casell in this one. And then capital projects consist of two different funds. This is the balance sheet for them. And then the other governmental. We'll look at that detail here in the other governmental.
Mr. Hutchison, from time to time, do you want me to raise my question, uh, may raise my hand? Or can I interrupt just to ask a quick question from time to time?
Please do, whenever you want.
I want to talk about the unearned COVID grant. Is that ARPA funds that you're talking about? 320,587. We had 505,000. So is that the ARPA funds that you're talking about for 320,000?
Uh, let's see here.
It's under liabilities, unearned.
Yeah, I see.
Yeah.
Let me see. I'm gonna I'm gonna go into the detail to try and come up with that answer here.
Okay.
Okay. All right, here it is right here. This is an analysis that we do for general fund grants. And I'm going to just pull this over so you can see it. You got EMPG and you got the COVID COVID release, and there's two of them. 4,630,000 and you got the 505. So there's just a little bit of that deferral that comes from the larger grant, 66 uh, 66,000. And the rest, 252, is from the 505.
From the ARPA funds. So you add those together.
Yes.
Okay, you got the 66,000 has already been committed. So basically, your ARPA money, I've got about 253,000 left.
That's correct.
In the year I'm in right now. Thank you. That's what I thought. Appreciate it.
Good, good question. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Any other questions on the general fund?
Um.
Okay.
Yeah, um, for the total fund uh, that's unassigned, the 2.98. Is that a healthy balance in your opinion?
Yes.
Okay, good. We'll make it some headway. Thank you.
Okay. We looked at this before. This is the reconciliation from the business presentation and the general fund. And here is the statement of revenue expenditures and changes, fund balance for the gen for those funds as well. You can see the general fund added to its net assets in the amount of 57,091. So it was uh, revenues exceeded expenses. And that included a $36,000 transfer out of, and I think this is bed tax coming out of uh, you know, coming out of these non-major funds right here. Expenditures, 8.8 million. And that's the total fund balance. Debt service had uh, collections and interest. And then had paid for principal on on one of the uh, GO bonds and interest. And reduced fund balance by 47,000.
Mm-hmm.
Capital projects. Revenue approximates. Expenses. And then other governmental. We'll see more detail on this as we go on. So good financial condition for those governmental funds. Here's the allocation or the reconciliation between the governmental view and business interview. We talked about that. And here's the budget and actual in a condensed form. This is this number we were talking about, showed how that we came up with that. And here's the water and sewer fund balance sheet. Now, the municipal funds receive an allocation of the OPEB and the PERS. That's what these numbers are. OPEB asset that's relating to water and sewer, 493,000. It's allocated based on wages. The purse pension liability, 671,000. And the bonds that are being serviced by the by the enterprise fund. Which includes a utility revenue bond. And then three elastic clean water loans. Notes payable loans. Here's the settlement funds for legal costs, 1.9. Now, yeah, and this money is in AML, and this is part of the legal funds that are for future legal costs in the Flint Hills litigation. The settlement funds here, 861,000 represents what the remnants of a million dollars that was received in prior years. It's being held for future operating costs. This is Moose, this is the unspent portion of Moose Creek Grants at the end of 123121. That's 194,000. And this should be the advanced credits on water usage. Lots of payables. And that has to do with Moose Creek. You can see how your plant is increasing, 150 million now. Appreciated at 45,105 net. Here's the P and L for the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund. Let's just go look at something. Revenue and expenses. Now, the loss before contributions and transfers, this is the amount of uh, grant-funded additions to plant that occurred during the year. Fixed acid additions, and we saw that earlier. So the the measure that's most important is right here, the loss before contributions and transfers. You see it's 3,111. Now, we, which you need to do and to do uh, I mean, obviously, that's not a positive, but generally what people do, it's not on, it's not uncommon to have a utility that after depreciation has a loss. But measure the depreciation that's a part of that. Here you see the water depreciation is 2.5 million. Depreciation of sewers, about 3 and 1/2 million, and that's greater than this loss. So if we pull out the non-cash expenses, which is what the depreciation is, you know, you're in the black.
Mm-hmm.
Drop by a half a million dollars. And I'm looking at something right over here on the side. All right. Cash flow for that fund. Yeah. Okay. Here are the notes. And I'm going to scroll quickly through these and we'll run across some that have have an information that I think is worth sharing this evening. A lot of this is uh, standard descriptions of accounting policies and different things about uh, the fund balance and how the gap presentation works. Quite a bit about uh, the purse in the in the OPEB. And how and methods that are used, deferred inflows and outflows to try and level the effect of uh, effective the market. At the end of the year, you had $10 million. And the city had collateral for cash in the bank and FDIC insurance, which exceeded the cash balances by 6.9 million. Also in cash, cash equity is 4.6 in the Alaska Municipal Elite Investment Pool. So that's the 10 million, AML and then 69, or yeah, the remainder. This 69 is the amount that the cash, uh, the collateral and insurance exceeds your cash balances, which are in the neighborhood of 6 million.
Okay, Gary, if we had a a a large expense, would we be able to use that, those cash balances or the reserves to fix a major water break or or uh, or repair?
In this, in right in here.
And any of that?
4 million.
Okay, 4 million?
Yeah. This this includes the legal fund. The 2.8 includes the 1.9 for the attorneys. So the remainder of the cash would be theoretically available.
Okay, thank you.
Capital assets come from your depreciation schedules. This is depreciation that's allocated to the entity-wide presentation, the business presentation. This is depreciation that's allocated to the utility fund. Here's a schedule of your DO bonds that are being paid by the debt service fund, the special assessments. The accrued leave is considered a long-term liability because it's not current. But this is the this is the amount that is paid by the outstanding at the end of the year that's paid by the debt service fund, the Street 75. 90 will be paid next year. So you're whittling that amount down. This is the rest of the debt. It's in the water and sewer. And there's a crude leave in here as well. And this note is sitting there. It's a note that has to do with the uh, the uh, I guess, the project that was contemplated relating to the mixing zone. This is money that had been obtained from Alaska from water. It was kind of a freeze on. And the rest of this stuff's payments are being made by the utility fund. There's some disclosures on payoffs of debt. Here's the inter-fund transfers. Some discussion about risk management, insurance. And then we get into a section that is related to the retirement. And now that we saw previously that the liability on the purse is 4.3 million and it's allocated between governmental and business. Then you have this OPEB asset that's 3.2 million dollars. It's amazing. That thing is just amazing. And then deferred inflows that are part of the effort to try and minimize the impact of of uh, of uh, earnings of your investments. But this information all comes from the state. They issue uh, actuary reports and then they issue uh, financial reports that are designed for each municipality, school, district. And it tells them their share. So this is where this information's being pulled. This is uh, this this shows you the 22% that you're paying and how they estimate it's being allocated, 14% to pension and 7% to the healthcare, the OPEB. This is the rate that would be needed to amortize that unfunded obligation. And then the difference, the state pays. That's the on behalf. And you know, it's broken into, you're a 1231, so you get two pieces. All these are measured at June 30, and you know, these are these are estimated what they are. You see the rates go higher, the market gets, you know, the on behalf comes down. Your 22 is stacked. So a lot of disclosures. Define it's, you know, our profession has one size shoe fits all. So the financial statement needs of the city in New York becomes a financial statement requirements of the city of North Pole. And so you get information that's it's overload. This is this is a section that's so absolutely over. Some of the stuff's good to know. You know, it entertains us every once in a while. Most of it is, it's it's, yeah. The actuarial was done June 30, 2020, then it was rolled over to June 30, 21, and that's what's in your financial state. The discount rate is 7.38. Used to be 8%. The fact that it went down increased the calculated liability. This is a schedule to show you what happens when you're, when you're, when the investments make more money. If they make 7.38% for the next 25 years, everything's going to be paid off perfectly. If it makes 8.38, then the obligation's less. It'll pay off earlier. If it doesn't make as much and it's 6.38, then you owe more. So this is just to show you that this is volatile, based on its earnings. And this is the calculation they're using right now. The tier four is defined contribution. So this begins pieces part of the financial statement where they discuss that aspects of of it. And one of the things they they say is, you know, the defined contribution employees are also paying, the employer's paying 22% of their wages as well to get at that unfunded defined benefit plan, even though they don't draw from it or benefit from it. Their wages are part of the base where the city's trying to pay down their share of the unfunded liability.
As tier four you're referring to?
Yes.
And the state's going to be in a lot of trouble years down the road with these tier four employees getting nothing. We need to fix it.
There's my, I think there's more tier four than than defined benefit. The city contributes 8% to the employees, or the employees are required to contribute 8% right now. Here comes the OPEB. This is the worst part because the OPEB consists of healthcare for tier tier 1, 2, 3, and then this is healthcare for defined contribution. And this is occupational death and disability for the tier four. So it's tripled. So all these rates are displayed. This is the old, this is the because everything's in trip. But there's that great big asset. So interesting. It's the why that's a mystery. So this just goes on and on. And I'm going to scroll through it because it's it's fly over country. Stuff. And I think the mate, the most important thing is watch what they do now and be aware of what what's being proposed or what's done and how that affects the city's portion, the obligation. Because you want this thing to go away.
Hundred and two milligrams per deciliter and changing flowing.
What's that? Pensions and ground suit groundwater lawsuit, some discussion of the Flint Hills resource suit and some discussion here on the V pass. And that's the end of the notes. So as we scroll through this, we run across another big section on public employee retirement system, last seven years. Last seven years. And this is the open or no actually, yeah, this is the open same thing. You can see the three different disclosures for every year.
So is it going down how much we owe or is it staying put because it keeps shifting the years for paying it out?
Well, the the OPEB, everything's going down. The purse, the liability is less instead of five million, it's four.
Okay.
And look at this, the OPEB has gone from oh, and a hundred and forty four thousand to having a three million dollar prepaid.
Ah, I don't trust that. When I was mayor, we had the same thing of a of a purse contribution rate of zero percent for multiple years. And that's where the state got into a lot of trouble.
This is the healthcare right here. But yeah, I understand. Yeah, yeah, everybody just, you know. Somebody show up and tell us what's going on. Look at that. It there was a little bit. There was a there was an asset last year, four hundred grand, moved to three million. Incredible.
Makes me nervous.
Yes. I don't. You don't read that healthcare is going down, right? So why does this make sense?
Exactly.
So when we get out of that section, then we get into supplementary that's more understandable. General fund detail with comparatives. This is the balance sheet for the general fund at December thirty first twenty twenty one. So you can go through take a look how things are in relation to each other. This is probably the most useful right here because it's got the final budget, the actual and the comparative. So this is a good one to look at when you're thinking about budgets going forward. And this is for the revenue. This is the expenses. There's our number. Negative two, six, three.
That's how much we had to dip into the fund balance to balance the budget?
Yes. Just think about the fire truck. That's half. Then we get to non major funds, building department, community ice. And this this information in total scrolls up to what we've seen previously.
Did we not? Did we not get rid of that ice ring fund?
This guy here?
Yes, there's no money in it. I thought we decided to get rid of that.
Couple of them probably need to go.
Is that the one over there by the middle school that ice rink?
We we donated the money out of that community of ice ring fund to the North Pole High School Ice Ring and the people are now going to be over there because the other one was not going to be kept up.
Right.
Including, I believe, the didn't we have a Sambani that went over there too?
Yes, we did.
Yes. Here's the P and L, the profit and loss and revenue expense of the funds. You can see the money coming out of the bed tax. This this is to the general fund. Debt service. Statement of revenue and expenditures, special assessment principal interest. And this information is in the governmental presentation I looked at previously. You can see the principal payment on the front on the bond, the interest, major expense. And it's cutting into its fund balance, pay off the debt. And then we get into the federal single audit. No findings for the programs, the major but this is this is the this is the financial statement, government reporting, which has the finding. We we looked at that. That's what we worked on in the in the work session was this finding right here. So we're ready to that's it. That's that's basically the end of it. Here's your schedule of expenditures of federal awards. And this money was subject to single audit and so was this money down here, the COVID. This is a reporting form for the single audit. And this is what we worked previous to find. So that's it. And I'm happy to try and answer any questions that you might have.
Will we get hard copies of this audit report?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Hutchinson, for another excellent presentation.
Thank you.
Gary, this is the mayor. I'll give a little comment if I may here. So like Gary Salden will do a thing like a large purchase for like a truck that we did because that truck had passed its thirty year mark. And we knew that it was now or never because the prices of everything kept going up as well. So we put money in the AML investment pool called the AMLIP way back in August of twenty nineteen so that we could have that money aside because we didn't have two hundred thousand dollars plus streams of money going in the what we call the somebody help me there, the fleet fleet fund, fleet fund. We didn't have money going into it. So I knew that we had something like three point three or three point eight million dollars sitting idle, drawing almost no interest over at McKinley Bank. So we put in the AMLIP. It gave us more interest in the last four days of August, August twenty seventh through thirty first than the whole first twenty seven days in August at McKinley Bank. So that's why we did that. But it was to be able to have that kind of money. And it's not just that. It was also to buy an ambulance or up to two police cars or whatever needed to be purchased. So that's one of those things that makes it easy to spend quite a bit, but that's what we put it in the AMLIP for. We're not in a position to be able to afford to put all that much into our fleet funds. So while we had it, we put it to good use. And it was better used to to beat the inflation factor, which we have done. And I don't know if Chief Heinecke wants to speak to that while he's here. He could probably speak to it better than I can. Just based on his needs for his fire and ambulance service chief.
Yeah, we we definitely, you know, beat inflation with with this fire truck. I know talking with another fire chief in the community that is in the process of ordering one, he's ordering a lesser truck at this time and paying more than we paid for that truck. So I would guess just being conservative, we've saved if we had ordered that truck today at least fifty thousand dollars.
Yeah. It's very hard to determine what inflation is going to do on a piece of equipment that's running eight hundred sixty or thousand or more dollars. So that's where I'm at on that. So it's a matter of having it available and putting it to use because we have to have the equipment. You don't want to keep the equipment beyond thirty years, do you?
No, definitely not. That that is becomes a safety concern for sure.
And I think it will probably be thirty one years by the time we get that equipment in March. Am I correct?
It will. Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. So Gary, going back to without beating a dead horse. I think you probably pretty much know that we're going to have to take a good hard look. So my question to you, sir, is can I give you a reply to your recommendation? Can I do that, say, no later than August the twenty ninth? It gives me about forty five days to get together with my accounting staff and my counsel and put something together to reply to your recommendation, a meaningful reply. Would that be adequate?
The data collection form needs to be filed by the end of July and it needs to have the grantee response to.
By the end of July.
Yeah.
So whether I have one formulated or not. Why is that the end of July, July thirty first?
That's just when they want the data collection form, information in the in their system.
And who are they again? You talk about for the federal audit?
Yes, for the federal single audit.
Well, I can do that, but I'm talking about further down the line about your overall recommendation. Can I get that to you for the overall recommendation by I want to say month after that?
You're talking about you're talking about
Recommendation for hiring staff.
Is that what you're referring to?
That's what I'm referring to, sir.
I'm. Yeah, I'll be here.
Okay, good. I I acknowledge what you say in a federal audit. I I can't dispute that. It's right there. Very clear, you know. So we're making the best we can under the circumstances. Thank you very much. Anybody have any any comments, suggestions, questions for Mr. Gary Hutchinson and the Alliance Accounting for the great work they've done for the
I do. I do have one. I do have one question. I know we think I asked the same question last year. And I know we've mentioned it and I know that our accounting staff may not like the idea, but it seems like we're always having some kind of issues with being on a different schedule than say the borough or somebody else that we are dealing with as far as the time of year that we end our undo our budget and stuff like that.
Just the calendar.
Yes, that's what I'm trying to say is, do you have any kind of input on the idea about switching that over so that we would be lined up with everybody else? And would that make it easier to to do that? I know as a as a council, new council person, it probably would be easier because you come on board and you're immediately thrown into budget stuff without really having any knowledge of any of it ahead of time. So.
Well, you know, the the you want to get you're going to want to get this conversion under control and and the system function and be an expert. You need to get that done, I think, first. And so you had a good clean year end and audit under your belt with that system. So so and the reason is it it's it becomes one more large task to change the fiscal year and it's it's going to fall on the account accounting department to do. They'll they'll either have two cutoffs, depending how you do it, but it, you know, we looked at this a year ago or so. And yeah, if there's if there's money that might be subject to single audit, state or federal, you need to coordinate with them, see what kind of reporting they would want. And and you know, you're there's rules that drive single audits on the federal and state level, seven hundred fifty thousand in spending per year drives both of them. So you're you might influence whether or not you need to have a state or federal single audit, depending on how you cut it off. So you'd have to coordinate with your granting agencies on that. You're either going to have a stub or you're going to have eighteen months.
What do you recommend a stub or eighteen? What do you think would be preferable?
I think it'd be easier if you did stubs.
I do too.
Yeah.
We can always put that off till next year. Yeah. We need to have Tyler up and doing what it's supposed to do in our staff in in all unity, all united up with that. That's what we need. Okay. Anything else for Mr. Gary Hutchinson?
Thank you.
Thanks for another year. We'll stay in touch.
Thank you. Have a good meeting.
All right. Santa.
Yes, mayor.
Santa. Do you mind taking over for a while here? I'm having an issue. My body's having an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You know where we're at? We're on a
I think we're up to item B.
We childhood cancer and C and go ahead, Santa, and I'll
Yeah, I'm not sure I have the proclamations in front of me.
They're on the if necessary, the clerk can read them, but they're on the pages on the packet.
I can pull them up on this.
Thank you. Pull them up on the screen. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you. So we have two proclamations. The first is the childhood cancer awareness month. Whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection report that cancer is a leading cause of death by disease among US children between infancy and age fifteen. This tragic disease is detected in nearly sixteen thousand of our countries young people each and every year. And whereas one in five of our nation's children loses his or her battle with cancer. Many infants, children and teens will suffer from long term effects of comprehensive treatment, including secondary cancers. And whereas founded almost thirty years ago by Stephen Feierstein, a member of the philanthropic Max Factor Cosmetics family, the American Cancer Fund for Children, Inc. and Kids Cancer Connection, Inc. are dedicated to helping these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection provide a variety of vital patient psychological services to children undergoing cancer treatment at Providence, Alaska Medical Center in Anchorage, as well as participating hospitals throughout the country, thereby enhancing the quality of life for these children and their families. And whereas the American Cancer Fund for Children and Kids Cancer Connection also sponsored courageous kid recognition recognition awards, pet assisted therapy, family sailing programs, KCC supercar experience and hospital celebrations in honor of a child's determination and bravery to fight the battle against childhood cancer. Now therefore, speaking on behalf of our mayor, Michael Welch, do hereby proclaim September twenty twenty two as childhood cancer awareness month in the city of North Pole to increase understanding of children with cancer and the importance of early detection and to acknowledge the advances made to eliminate this disease.
Yes, yes.
We also have a second proclamation. Whereas the city of North Pole, Alaska welcomes our friends from all over the United States to minister freely to the lost, sick and hurting. And whereas we as a city of North Pole join in with Groundbreaker International and King Jesus North Pole Radio to break the spiritual strongholds in this region. And whereas we hereby renounce every spiritual work of darkness surrounding North Pole and we proclaim every captive to be set free. And whereas we realize that the synergy to make this successful is the collaboration of Eric Burton from Groundbaker, Groundbreaker International, Pastor Randall Burton of Northview Church in Columbus and Edinburgh, Indiana. Pastor Keith Taylor across Tabernacle in Terre Haute, Indiana, Jordan Cunningham, the president of Redemption Project Ministries with his wife Casey Dale, and Linda Tierney of Bibles for Others Ministry from Grand Rapids, Minnesota, host Dick Olson of KJNP Radio. And last but not least, Fire on the Ice Revival Coordinator Bridget Dennis from River of Life in Lakewood, Colorado. Now therefore, on this day, July eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, on behalf of Michael Welch, Mayor of the city of North Pole, Alaska, speaking awakening over this city and the surrounding regions. Today, Mayor Welch declares a revival over the people of North Pole, Alaska that extends beyond our border, July eighteenth to twenty-third, twenty twenty-two. God have your way with us and move freely among your people. Let there be a holy fire on the ice. Signed by Michael Welch, Mayor of the city of North Pole. Thank you. And now we go to item number seven, council members' questions of the mayor. And since the mayor has excused himself momentarily, I'm not sure I can answer questions of the mayor. So we go to communications from the department heads, our borough representative, and the city clerk. Um, I think we're starting off with, uh, Ms. Fogerty.
Yes, thank you, Santa. Um, I, I sent out an email today with, um, a report, looks a little different than our old ones with, uh, budget, uh, compared to actuals for June. Those figures will still change some because we are behind with our cash receiving between both, uh, programs. So the revenue and those, uh, will change some. Uh, the spreadsheet I put together that, um, Melissa could show on the screen if you guys want her to, but is really what actually happens. I combined that from, um, both systems, uh, Excel and, um, as far as the sales tax goes and, and Tyler. Um, I didn't add anything from last time, although we weren't able to share this on screen last time. Uh, where this started was is, uh, the mayor wanted me to show you the interest that we've earned on the average balance, basically. This over here is, um, uh, Mount McKinley versus the AML. You can see the last, uh, AML amount of interest we earned did increase significantly. Um, and so we haven't, we, we don't get those statements right early in the month. And as of today, I still didn't have the statement for June. I could probably show up tomorrow. Um, and then the sales tax of, this is what the, the comparison between twenty-one and twenty-two for those months. Now, online sales tax, we had, we started receiving in March. And then, um, April went up a little bit, so I think that probably there was some late scragglers from March. It was kind of a, you know, getting people in the routine to file the taxes with the state, um, Alaska Remote Sellers Tax. Uh, and then, uh, they are actually, they run two months behind. So today I got notice from them that we'll be receiving what was collected for the month of May sometime in the next couple of days. So, and I, I, I can keep, uh, keep this up to date and kind of just report on it, you know, on the second meeting of the month. If you guys like to see that kind of separate than, separate than the report with all the funds in it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Are there any questions from council? All right, Tricia, thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna, I'm gonna step out of the meeting now because, um, my power's out and my generator's running out of fuel, so.
All right. Thanks for being here.
All right. Thank you, everyone.
All right. Next up, I think we have, uh, our police department, our police chief.
Thank you, Councilman Claus. I just, just don't have a very, very much to talk about tonight, but, uh, I do apologize about my date being wrong on my notes, and I had, uh, apparently saved the wrong document and sent the wrong one. So I apologize for that. I'll send out a more updated version to the clerk. Uh, I do apologize for that oversight. Just a few things. The July twenty-seventh fall in here is ceremony that's moved before clock. So our employees have time to do cleanup and do the ceremony and so on and so forth. So, uh, I do believe Mayor Welch, hopefully we are guest speaker. That's the plan. And the second thing, obviously, until I told, we hosted our coffee, the coffee Santa Claus House, and it was a super good success. Um, I do appreciate all my staff and the public who showed up. It was, uh, a lot of people attended, and it was, uh, I think, a well-received event. The Lieutenant Lynn Hag, if you're not aware, has, uh, actually put in his retirement paper for September eighteenth, and we've already started that search for a new lieutenant. And I, I don't know if I've said this before, but this is probably the most extremely, most difficult position to fill that I ever had to fill, and I've had to fill it twice, and it's never an easy process. So I do, uh, do appreciate the patience on that. That should be out for about three weeks, and then we'll take about a month and a half to continue that process, uh, do testing and oral boards and so on and so forth to make the right selection. Because obviously that, that person's second in command, so it has to be a, a good, good decision. And, you know, it's a very, very competitive process. Uh, so we're hoping for, uh, quite a few applicants, so. Stay tuned. Uh, the drug, the drug detective, as you know, I don't know if I mentioned the last thing, that, uh, that has been put out and advertised for a, for a backfill. So hopefully we'll get somebody internally, and if not, uh, we'll have to decide what our next step is. Uh, we did complete a pretty big project that's taken up a lot of time with, especially for our evidence concerning Rachel Wing. It's called the, uh, basically Criminal Justice Information Systems, and it's an audit of our policies. It's complicated, it's boring, it's important, and the FBI will yell at us that we don't, we don't make sure we have a solid policy. So if anybody, you know, someone's got to do it, and then I appreciate Rachel stepping up with a little help from Lieutenant myself, but, uh, she, she did most of the heavy lifting. But that's all I have, and, uh, appreciate your attention.
Thanks, Chief. Does anybody have any questions? All right. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Next up, Fire Chief Heineken.
Yeah, good evening, everybody. Just a couple of things I have tonight. Um, first off, the mayor had asked me to give everybody an update on the wildfire weather. Um, and luckily, this cool, uh, wet pattern that we've had blessed us over the next week is scheduled to continue on for the, for the time being. Um, so it has definitely brought significant change to the wildfire weather and the, the activity of the wildfires in the interior. As most of you have probably noticed with the, the smoke change, it's been a welcome change. Um, so, um, a lot of the stuff has been, uh, red flag warning has been removed. Um, burn, burning is allowed again with the proper burn permits and the proper, uh, precautions there. Um, fireworks are once again able to be, to be used. Um, and then along those lines, we did close the normal fireworks sales period for the vendors during the, the heat of the summer. So, um, one of the vendors has already applied to have that open, um, in, in Labor Day weekend. Um, so the mayor and I have discussed it and decided that, yeah, it would be appropriate to open, um, during that period the same amount of time that they were closed in the summer period. So they'll be allowed to open Au- August twenty-second through September ninth. Um, so I predict, you know, one or two of the vendors would probably open at that time. Um, additionally going on at the fire department, um, is all of our annual stuff that we really knock out all summer. Uh, we're on to the last one, really, and that's our hydrant testing. Um, it started today. The crews are out today starting the hydrant tests, and, um, we test all the city hydrants. Every hydrant within the city gets opened and flow tested each summer. Um, these flow tests are pretty essential for us. It, it helps us in many ways. Um, and the, the biggest one is to help us prepare if we do get a potential fire in certain areas of the city. Uh, we know what type of water flows we can expect from these hydrants to put a proper plan together to, to mitigate any type of fire that we would have to deal with. Um, secondary is, uh, is our water system is a top-notch system, to be honest. Um, ISO is the, is who grades us every five years as a fire department and kind of tells us how, how well we do at our jobs. And the water department is a very large factor to that. So, uh, kudos to utilities. They, they help out tremendously with our insurance rates because of the ISO rating. Um, so you should be seeing, uh, the crews out. They usually are in one of the ambulances or one of the pickups. I'm going, uh, hydrant to hydrant through your neighborhood. And, uh, if you see them, uh, just let them, let them know that, uh, they're appreciated, and they're out there in the drizzly. Hopefully, it's gonna be drizzly wet weather for the next week and a half, um, opening those hydrants, getting wetter. The last thing I have tonight is, uh, we finally got the last three doors, uh, the bay doors of the fire station installed. These are the doors that we had ordered late last fall, and then due to the supply chain issues everybody is seeing, um, it has been a waiting game. And so they installed the first four of doors on the front of the building, uh, back in May. And then they were still waiting for some of the parts and pieces to come in for the remaining doors. So last week, their crews came in and installed those three doors. They look tremendous. They operate, um, wonderfully. Um, they're quiet. They go up and down when they're supposed to. Uh, we were having issues over the last few years with the doors. As we try to get them to come down, they mysteriously go back up. And in emergency services, that's, it's really undesirable to leave the fire station to go to a fire call and have the door go back up behind you when you might be gone for a couple hours at twenty below. So, um, a little reassuring to have those doors in before this coming winter. Um, that's all I have for this evening. I would, uh, welcome any questions.
Thanks, Chief Heineken. Questions?
Yes, Santa. Uh, Chief, how was your new, how was your new, uh, Assistant Fire Chief, uh, whatever it is that you're calling him? How's he working out for you?
Um, yeah, Assistant Chief Chambers is working out tremendously. Um, we really got lucky as a city. I mean, he comes to us extremely knowledgeable, extremely experienced, and we've put him right to work. Um, you know, some of the, the tasks that we just haven't been able to do over the years, um, I've been able to kind of direct him towards, you know, ironing out some of our standard operating procedures. Um, he is tremendous go-getter when it comes to that type of policy, um, stuff and getting paperwork in order. So, um, he's really coming in handy there, and, uh, and I plan on really using him into the future here to, to help quite a few of the projects we have. So, um, yeah, I'm absolutely grateful to have Todd on board.
Well, hopefully we get to meet him one of these days.
Yeah, I, I, I plan on, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll say this is though we're gonna, once the cha- the chambers is used again for meetings, uh, we definitely plan on introducing you to most of the fire department staff. Um, you know, we, we've got a lot of staffing change in the last year since we really haven't been meeting in cham- chambers. And, uh, we have a, a few things that we would like to do in front of council in person. So, uh, once we're back, uh, face to face, you'll definitely get to meet him and many of the others at the fire station.
Sounds good. Thank you, Chief.
Any other questions? Chief Heineken, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
And next up, we have, uh, Ellen Glab, HR and Special Assistant to the Mayor.
Hello.
Hi, Ellen.
Hello. Um. I think the wrong person popped up for a second there. This is, this is Mary Sue Watson. Hello? Hi, Mary. Yes. If you can hold on just a moment. Sure. Okay. Um, so I'm, sorry, I got thrown off a little bit there. In the previous meeting, you guys had asked for, uh, an idea of how things have gone with the insurance. We have this, I did all the numbers, and as far as active employees, and this does include. Okay, excuse me. Are you, are you talking to me? Uh, Melissa, could you?
Mary, this was, uh, this is the mayor pro tem, uh, Santa Claus. We have you scheduled for a little bit later in our meeting under New Business. Please hold. Thank you.
Okay, no problem. Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
Ellie?
Thank you, Santa. Um, so of sixty-five employees, forty-six were eligible for health insurance. Melissa popped it up here on the screen so you guys can see what I've got here. Um, forty-one are currently enrolled in the city's healthcare program. We are aware of one that had previous healthcare and declined this year. And that I believe there are three that didn't have it in the past and enrolled after changes were made. Um, I did list the current staffing. The open AP position is currently listed and accepting applications. Um, we've started seeing those come in. Uh, Public Works, their summer hires will be finishing up here at the end of August. And then I've also got the list of utilities, fire department, and police, police here, and the two open positions that the chief had previously mentioned. Um, I've included with this briefing, if Melissa, if you'll scroll down to the stu- the other part of it. Uh, right there. So I've included with this briefing, uh, showing the training completions of the coursework I've assigned to the staff. Um, though not all items that are on this have hit their due date. Some of the due dates aren't until August, and for some, in some cases, they're not until even later than that. Um, I am encouraged because we do have a seventy-five percent completion rate at this point, which means only twenty-five percent, the majority of which are not due yet, have not completed the, the tasks. And if you scroll down, you can see that a lot of department, especially in utilities, can you go to utilities? Sorry, it's sideways, guys. Uh, Melissa, you're awesome. If you go down to Public Works, you'll see one more, I think. Two more.
There we are. Uh, you'll see Public Works and Utilities have extra assignments. Those are from their supervisors.
These guys have done a wonderful job on staying on top of them and doing them once they're assigned. So I want to say I'm very impressed with how they've handled that. Um, I've also removed the due date requirements. So it's no longer a requirement for council to participate in the training, so I would encourage them to. Um, it just is beneficial, beneficial, helpful things. Um, and I did check to make sure that this would not affect our eligibility, um, with AMLJA. I hope I said that correctly. Um, if you choose to participate, that would be wonderful. We did have our makeup safety meeting for the month of June on July seventh, uh, due to me being out on COVID, with COVID. Um, we discussed fire safety, and each department representative was asked to provide an evacuation plan for the next meeting at the end of July. They were also asked to check the SDS, SDS sheets and locate their copies for their departments. I would also like to note that progress has been made on the employee policy manual. I'm finishing up some documents and edits after our last meeting, and I'm hoping to have it ready for full review in the near future. I have set some ambitious goals for myself, so, uh, I'm pushing pretty hard on that one to try and get it completed as soon as possible. And if you guys have any questions for me, I'll be glad to answer.
Any questions for Miss Glab?
Uh, no questions, just a comment. Ellen, I'm sure, I'm so glad that we have you on board, helping our employees, uh, take advantage of the benefits.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobson.
All right. Well, up next, we have Councilwoman Welsh, our borough representative.
Very quick report. They have had no meeting, so I have no report. Questions? They only, they actually only have one meeting in, in this month, and I wasn't aware. I was all ready to give my report to them here on Thursday, and I was wondering why I had not received a link to connect with them. But that was a good reason. When I went looking for more information, I found out that the next meeting is not this Thursday, but Thursday after that.
Thank you, Councilwoman Welsh. Um, up next, we have our city clerk, Ms. Dion.
Yeah. Good evening, everybody. Sorry, there's a lot of, a lot of activity going on here today. Um, so, um, me, I've been, um, I did some training earlier, uh, last week. I did a PIO training that was super interesting. Um, I've been looking around for some other kinds of certifications, um, for the PIO part of my job. Um, so I've been looking into that. Um, otherwise that, I've been working on elections, um, getting together with the city clerk and the borough clerk, um, and some other, you know, some other lesser clerks. Um, and we're gonna all do the Golden Days Parade, uh, this Saturday. So come out and, uh, cheer on that. We'll be giving out candy and hopefully local election information. Um, and then I've been working, um, with them also on the pamphlet, which, um, I'm very excited about. I think it's gonna be like just a super good move for us to, you know, to get out that information. Um, and otherwise that, I just wanted to remind you guys that we're closed starting Monday at, or sorry, Friday at one o'clock, and we're closed until Monday at one o'clock. But you guys know, you can always reach us on cell phones. That's it.
Any questions for our city clerk? All right, seeing none. I wanted to mention that, uh, our director of city services is out of town, so there's no report, um, this evening. Uh, up next, we have ongoing projects report, which I will leave for the mayor upon his return. And citizens' comments. Yep.
Oh, I just want to pipe in real fast. Um, for the ongoing, um, project thing, I wanted to share with you guys real fast. Um, uh, the, uh, Explore Ferments pop by earlier today, and they were gonna try to be with us tonight, but it doesn't look like that they're going to be able to. uh, Explore Ferments pop by earlier today and they were gonna try to be with us tonight, but it doesn't look like that they're going to be able to. Um, they just came out with this new Aurora viewing map and guide. And I just wanted to share, they wanted to share that with you guys real fast. So I'm gonna share my screen. So this is their fantastic, it's super beautiful brochure. Um, and it talks about, you know, the Aurora and um, good places that you can find it and some basics on, you know, the taking pictures of it and stuff, but they have a nice little blur up here about the city. Um, and then there's this, this little map that came with it. Um, it's this big bold out map. It's really beautiful. Um, and uh, you know, this is part of what our bed tax money went towards. So uh, they wanted to bring some by for us and wanted to share it with you guys tonight. So we're gonna have some here at the office if anybody was interested in grabbing one. That's it.
Thanks, Melissa. That looks great. Um, Explore Forever is already done, is, continues to do a really spectacular, uh, job for the city. So Ms., let's see, Ms. Dion, do we have any citizens' comments?
We should have.
All right, thank you. Then we'll move to old business, item that's been consented, item A ordinance twenty-two fourteen. Then we move to new business ordinance twenty-two fifteen, ordinance of the city of North Pole to amend the title three point one six, qualifications for elective office, found on pages sixteen to eighteen in our packet. And ask the city clerk if you wouldn't mind putting that up on the screen, please. Well, it's being uh, put up. Uh, I'm gonna ask for any, um, I would like to ask our city clerk to uh, comment on this particular ordinance, if she would, please.
Sure. So the other clerks, the borough clerk and the city clerk and I have, um, gotten together and uh, wanted to bring this forth to you guys. We're looking to make a pamphlet that we can give out to voters. It's going to be electronic, but it's also going to be in paper form. Um, here, available here at City Hall and it's gonna include information about the candidates for our various seats that we have opened this, uh, election.
Thank you. During our work session, uh, the mayor asked that we put a total for the biographical section and the other section that would be not more than four hundred words. He was trying to uh, make sure it's very, very clear uh, to anybody reading it. Um, I noticed under C, it says the biographical information may not exceed hundred and fifty words. The nonpartisan position statement may not exceed two hundred and fifty words or no more than four hundred words combined, including uh, articles and words such as A and et cetera. So have to read nonpartisan position statements and must be typed written and submitted in person by mail or electronically. Are there any? Do we have a motion?
Well, move to, move to, uh, consider this, uh, to make this change. Hang on for a second. I'm trying to get on here. They won't let me do it. Uh, no, it won't let me move that. Uh, never mind. So we had, we had to put, we had to put it up first. So we, uh, right? So move to, move to consider this ordinance two fifteen of the city of North Pole.
Thank you.
Okay, Deshaun, second. Okay.
Thank you. And would there be a motion for an amendment, perhaps?
I think you had a, I think now, don't we have, don't we have to have, uh, citizen comments first? Or just the fact that there are none?
Or none.
Okay. Well, I would like, I would like to move that we, uh, do not I don't know how we can word that, that we do not, uh, limit them to words for this and for that, but just simply say that they have a statement up to and no more than four hundred words.
How about this, I know, uh, the biographical information and the nonpartisan position statement combined may not be more than four hundred words.
Perfect. So moved.
Second one. Thank you. We have an amendment and a second. Um, Madam Clerk, would you please, uh, call the roll to?
Okay, uh, Mr. Kramer.
Yes.
Mr. Skips. Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes. That passes, uh, the amendment and uh, now we go back to the, um, original vote for this ordinance.
All right, uh, Mr. Jacobson.
Yes.
Mr. Keller.
Yes.
Mr. Claus.
Yes.
Mr. Skips.
Yes.
Mrs. Welch.
Yes.
Mr. Kramer.
Yes. Thank you. That ordinance has been approved by vote. And also under new business, we have, uh, item B, which is dispute of customer utility bill. That's pages nineteen and twenty, and I believe, uh, uh, Ms. Mary, you're online, I believe.
Yes, I guess I am.
Thank you so much for your patience.
No problem. My name is Mary Sue Watson and in May, we received a four hundred and fifty-nine dollar water bill. Um, first of all, I'm a military wife. I've never paid a water bill in my life and I'm sixty-eight years old. Uh, so this really caught us off guard. Um, we don't know what happened. We thought maybe our grandson left the faucet on, the out, the outside faucet in the backyard. Um, my husband went outside to check on it. And what he, what he discovered was when the outside faucet is turned in the off position, it was still leaking. And the faucet was installed at the time the water system was put in, from the way I understand this. And I'm just looking for, I'm just wondering if we could have a one-time courtesy to maybe have this adjusted or uh, altered in some way and that, that's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. That's it. We're sort of, um, here at the city level. Um, this is Santa Claus, by the way. Uh, we're here at the city level. We're always conscious about, um, setting a precedent, although we are um, compassionate with our constituency regarding matters, especially unexpected ones like the one you were presenting to, uh, council. So I'd like to open it up for questions and perhaps discussion by our city council members who are present, if you don't mind.
Sure. Not at all.
Um, so, uh, I do have a question for you, ma'am. Uh, it's, we have a memo from the city clerk, Melissa, saying that um, they, that the city had no, notified you, uh, about a possible leak detected in your system on May fifth. Was that the first time that you were getting a water, water service or did you start your water service earlier in the year?
No, we had, um, we've been, oh gosh, I hope I'm answering this correctly. We had the, the city water installed, I think it was two years ago, and then we were given a credit. I can't remember how much that was. And then, we, first of all, I never got a call about a leak. Let me just answer that question. Um, and the bill was ranging about a hundred dollars a month. And then I got this one and I just, I thought, whoa, I thought maybe I missed a payment. I didn't know what happened. And I contacted, I think it was Melanie. Melanie and I had been emailing back and forth. I'm not, I'm not sure if I'm answering your question or not.
You are, you are.
Okay, okay. Um, yeah, no, I, I didn't get a call about a leak at all. No, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
There are other questions, comments?
Santa? This is, this is, this is Mrs. Welch. Um, I was just, uh, I was in the office when we were speaking to Melissa, actually, about this particular, uh, water bill. And one of the things where she was saying that the average was running between a hundred and twenty and hundred and sixty, uh, or something like that, but, um,
On, on my water bill?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, uh, I, I don't know, from, from, from the point of view of what we have done in the five years that I have been on the council has been that if the water leakage is not due to our fault, there's nothing that we can really do without setting a precedent that if somebody, I mean, people have had toilets running for long periods of time and stuff like that. And then there's really, that there was really nothing that we could do. We have in the past, if I recall right, have offered, if it is a hardship to pay that, we've offered a possibility of of some kind of a payment plan that I, uh, will have to ask the other council members if I'm correct about that. I think we had one that we allowed them to pay off the extra amount, you know, still pay your regular bill, but then pay whatever was over, uh, as a, as a, you know, several, several payments to make it so that it's not gonna stop you from having food on the table type thing, so.
Right. No, no, I understand that. And I paid the bill. I paid the, uh, the four hundred and fifty-nine dollar, dollar, four hundred and fifty-nine dollar water bill and I, to my knowledge, I can't, I can't remember our bill being as high as you told me. You said a hundred and twenty and a hundred and sixty. I'll have to go back and look at my statements.
Yeah, I think she might have, she might have said it was between the highest was like a hundred and sixty and the, and the other one was about a hundred, a hundred and twenty or something like that. So it could, it could be. She didn't go in and give me specific numbers, so.
Right. Okay, no, that's fine. I, and I could go back and, and you know, just review that. When we had that credit, I was just looking at it and just filing it. But then when we started paying it, paying for it, I started being more aware of it. And, um, it, it, it just, it's, it's, it's new to, well, it's new to us. It really is. And when I got this bill, it just, it just blew me away. I thought, my goodness, what, what's going on here? Um, and as far as food on the table, no, that's not happening. Um, I, I just wanted to know if I could, if, if you would consider making an adjustment on it, that's all. And, and you know, it's just my husband and I here. Our grandson is here on Saturdays and he plays in the yard and other than that, it's just the two of us. So I, I guess I, I just, and again, I never paid a water bill in my life, so this is all new, but I just, it just was so high that month. I just, it just totally caught me off guard.
Mary, uh, this is Santa again.
Yes.
Um, as far as you know, has whatever that leak was been stopped?
No, I don't think so. My, well, no, my husband came in and turned it off from the inside in the garage.
So it shouldn't be a continuing problem as far as.
No, it should not. No, no.
So.
I'm anxious to see what next month's bill is, but no.
So which would you prefer? Would you prefer that we vote on this this evening, that the council votes, or would you like us to table it to give you more time to go through your bills and past invoices?
No, if you would vote on it now, that's fine because by my reconciling it, I'm just, unless you want an, well, you guys have, have cop, you have everything there. I was just going to re, re, just reconcile it for my own benefit because I, I can't remember a water bill being that high. And I know that June's water bill was high as well. It was a hundred and seventy-one dollars and i- is that I don't know. I, I don't know what is normal. I just know those two years since the city water was put in. And again, I'll have to reconcile this myself. It was averaging about a hundred dollars a month. I don't know what other people pay. I don't know. I don't talk to a neighbor here anything about it. But again, it just totally caught me off guard.
Thank you, Councilwoman Welsh.
Um, I would just, I would just like, uh, for, uh, Ms. Mary there to uh, make very sure that that particular thing is not an issue. Because if there is another, if there is another leak somehow or another in the house or in the part that runs to or from the, the house or something else that there, that's caused by other things that you don't sit back and say, oh, we, we, we turned this off now because it, there could be something else. So I think it's really important. Uh, I don't know if you can see your meter. I'm not sure because I don't have a meter on my house because I'm on a well. Um, maybe some of the, uh, other council people that are here that, that are all actually on this, on the system could tell us. Uh, can you see if the meter is running, uh, in, from inside your house? Mr. Jacobson maybe could tell us that. Uh, because then that could be an easy way to see if you have that shut off outside, then you can go and look, is my meter actually moving? I know I'm not using water of any kind. Is my meter still running? So that there could be a leak elsewhere than what you think. Cause that sounds like a lot of water to run for that shorter period of time.
Yep, it's, okay, and let me, is the meter? I'm sorry, what was the question you asked me? Is the, is the meter running?
If the, if the meter is, if the, once you have that shut off outside, you shut it off inside the garage. So you know that that particular is not a, a water thing. So if you're not using any other water in the house and you then go look at your meter, read the meter, wait an hour, read it again or something like that. If you can do that, I don't know what it looks like. That's what I'm saying. To just to make sure that there might not be another point of leakage.
Okay, I, we can do that. We can check. I could get with my husband and have him check that. Yes, definitely. I just wrote it down. We're, we'll be on top of that if, yes, we will.
So to answer your question, to answer your question, Ms. Welch, uh, yes, you can go to your, uh, water, uh, connection and there's a meter there that has the, the numbers there that you can see if it's moving and how much it moves in, you know, a period of time, uh, so that you can make sure that you're not, you don't have a water leak.
Okay, good to know. Good to know. Cause I, cause I do know when I talked to Melissa, well, emailed Melissa. She talked about the water, the toilets running that you had just mentioned and we don't have any of that here. There's nothing running. We keep everything, you know, serviceable. Um, so I don't, I don't know. I don't, I don't have an answer. That's why I'm coming to you guys.
Um, Ms. Dion, do you think, do you have anything to add to this that would inform the council before we, uh, decide to vote? Ms. Dion? Do you have anything to add before the council, uh, decides to vote?
No, no, I don't know. Melanie, um, included that letter, um, that we sent to you guys, um, with, you know, the, the research that she had done about what the average bill was and stuff. Um, so that's all I have.
Thank you.
Our question, uh, Councilman Claus.
Councilman.
Um, I'm curious, you said that the, um, the water been hooked up for the past two years and then.
When the city water was put in, yes.
Two years ago and then all of a sudden, your husband noticed that the, the water was running at one point. Was that, that was after.
When we got that, see, when we got that big bill, we were walking, my husband was walking around the house on the outside and thinking, what is going on here? And, uh, and like I said, in the backyard, the, the faucet, when it's turned in the off position, it still leaks.
Okay.
And, and, um, let me just, cause I have my notes here. And apparently the faucet was installed at the time the water system was put in. So we're not really sure what's going on.
So you had, you didn't have any problems the year prior with that faucet at all?
No, 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 I, no. And again, I'll reconcile everything because I'm not sure when that, I want to say it was a two thousand dollar credit we were given and I reran it, we ran, that ran out about two years, well, less than two years after that, but I, I never noticed the bill being that high ever.
And, uh, who was the contractor that installed your water, uh, to the city water?
Oh, I don't know. I, I, I don't know, sir. Um, they just came in and I don't know. We didn't, we didn't have anything to do with it. Um, I just assumed the city, it was the city's um, job. I don't know. um, job. I don't know.
Okay, that was another question, uh.
Thanks, Councilman Cromer. Um, Mary, I'm not quite.
Ms. Ellen has her hand up.
Thank you. Who's glad?
Uh, just as a, uh, reference point, Ms. Mary, um, uh, tradition, from, from my experience, a traditional water, water bill of what the average was is probably likely normal for, for your size home. Also, if you include that you, I don't know if you have a garden or anything like that.
No, no.
Yeah, that's probably, that's probably pretty standard. You normally see a slight increase during the summer months just from extra usage that people tend to do. Um, but as far as that, my, I, I do have a quick question. Um, uh, is to ask, are, are you sure that it was the city that installed the spigot and not a separate contractor?
No, whoever in, whoever, um, I'm really sounding ignorant here. Whoever dug up.
You're not, don't worry.
Okay. Thank you. Whoever dug up everything in our front yard, in the driveway, I don't know who that was. I don't know. I, uh, we sat on the front porch and just watched it. My grandson loved seeing the big trucks. I don't, we don't know who did it though. I don't know. And they did everybody's on our street here on Julie Lane. They did the whole street.
I, I, and I'm fairly new to the area. I just have quite a bit of experience with water in the sewer. And so I was just asking some periodic questions to try to understand because it's tr- traditionally from what I've seen and from my experience, uh, most of the time, most cities don't get involved in direct like water spigots and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
And so I just wanted to, I just wanted to check and see on that.
And I don't know if it was city. I, I, I'm not sure who, I'm not sure who did it. Or who, who was responsible for the job being done. I don't know.
So, um, this is John here, uh, Councilman Cromer. I believe when Bill Butler was here, um, in the Moose Creek project, he said that people had to get a general contractor to give the water from their house to the, the water line. So that's what I think you, but we can wait till the city works person comes back and and clarify if you want to make sure.
Okay. Okay, um, okay.
Councilwoman Welsh?
And again.
So, so in my, in my, uh, knowledge of things like that, even if that particular faucet was installed by the city, which I don't believe that they would have installed that thing outside, the city wouldn't. Maybe the contractor would have. Uh, I can tell you, I had a water faucet, uh, a, one of those water faucets installed outside. Now, if it's not a frost proof one, it could be damaged due to frost. Uh, I have one that's a frost proof one that was leaking last, last year before I, uh, before we went into winter and it survived, but it was only a two-year-old faucet. So even if it was installed by them, uh, there's no guarantee that a faucet's gonna last that long. Uh, like that. So I wouldn't think that the city has any kind of, uh, responsibility to make sure that it's, you know, once it's installed, it's yours to, to, to maintain, et cetera, et cetera. So, uh,
Well, I, I didn't mean to put any, I didn't mean to put any blame on the city. I just, um, I, I, I just know from city water. So I just assumed it was the city people. And again, please excuse my ignorance here.
Hey, no, like, no, no need to ex- excuse and you had to, you had to look at for you, for your best interest as far as that goes. So, but I guess we'll discuss it. Yes, go ahead.
Yep, that's fine. No, I, I did have one question. When you said this, my standard water bill, you weren't referring to the four hundred and fifty-nine dollars, were you?
No.
I'm not sure. Okay, okay. Cause I, like I said, I, 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 I don't know. I'm, this is all new to me and I, I even said to my husband, I wish we could just go back to well water already. We didn't have to worry about it. But then I understand, I understand the improvements and I understand all that. So I had to get over that. But, um, and as far as the garden, um, no disrespect, but I have plastic flowers all through my front yard. I don't have to water anything out there. But, um, okay, well, whatever, what, whatever you guys think is right, I'll honor that. And I, I do appreciate your time.
That's what we're here for.
Thank you. So, uh, would you prefer that we vote this evening, Ms. Mary?
Um, what, what would be best? It, again, it, I mean, would it be better, would it be better for me if I waited and let you guys discuss it tomorrow or next week and get back to me? Or would it be better for me to just stay on the line while you vote? What, what, what would you recommend?
Well, Santa, if I could respond, um, I, I think you would, since you've already paid this bill, uh, we do have time to consider all the, the details and, and discuss it. And we could take, we could go into action until the next city council if that's the desire of the, the council tonight.
Uh, again, whichever, whatever is best. It, and again, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. Um, I'm just glad you listened to me, took the time to hear all this and here the time to me, have me blabber. But whatever you guys think is best.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. Thank you, Councilor. Do I have a motion to postpone or table?
Move to postpone until the next city council meeting.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Ms. Dion, would you go ahead and?
Sure. Uh, Ms. Welch?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobson?
Yes.
Mr. Cromer?
Yes.
Mr. Keller?
Yes.
Mr. Claus?
Yes.
Mr. Skips?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Mary. We've, uh, postponed that.
Okay, no problem. Oh, thank you. What, what, what is, what, what is expected of me now? What do I need to do?
I think, uh, you can listen in at the next city council meeting, but you won't have an option necessarily, necessarily to, uh, uh, have any testimony. It will give us a chance to kind of think and, and, and talk about it. Uh, and then we'll, we'll pretty much just inform you of what our action is that night by taking a vote to, uh, on the, on the matter.
Okay, so do I just, when is the next meeting?
August first.
Okay, and do I call the same number?
Can we, can we just direct the, the, uh,
I will contact you.
Yeah.
Yep.
What was that?
I'll contact you, Mary. I'll, I'll email you in the morning.
Okay, and this is Melissa?
Melissa, yep.
Okay, great. Thank you, Melissa. And thanks, uh, thank you everyone for your time.
Thanks, Ms. Mary. You have a good night. Thank you so much.
You did the same. All right, bye-bye.
All right, it looks like we're on to council comments.
All right, Mr. Jacobson?
Uh, thank you. Um, I, I, I was kind of, uh, uncomfortable trying to make a decision tonight because I think with a lot of our new customers coming online, uh, who had a credit and who not perhaps had a history of having to pay for a water bill. Um, they're not really looking at the details. So I don't know if we should carve out like a standard, you know, we'll reduce your bill by ten percent this time, just as a way of, uh, being new to the system or, or whether or not we just hold fast to, there's no, um, you know, reduction because you, 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 this is all, uh, the, the customer's responsibility. So that's kind of where I was just trying to kick the can down the road for another two weeks, just to kind of think about, is that something we want to try going down? Cause we will be bringing on a lot of new customers and in your future, it may be having more of these than we've had in the past because we've had slow development in the city for many decades. And now suddenly we're going through a rapid expansion with lots of customers and, uh, it'd be nice to have something that we can consistently offer them, uh, as a consideration for them coming before the city council, uh, pleading their case, uh, taking responsibility to correct the problem. Um, I think that might be helpful for us so that we're not put in a situation where we have this really delightful person who is communicating with us and, you know, none of us want to deliver the bad news. So, also, I, uh, I hope that the mayor's okay. So I know if, you know, if you later on could just let us know what, uh, how the mayor's doing that, I'd appreciate that.
I'm coming back to you guys here.
Oh, all right.
Thank you.
Just in time.
He's still alive. That's a good thing.
Welcome back there.
Thank you. A, a way, uh, a liter more, a kilo more because they had to put a kilo of, uh, of IV into me. My pancreas started to fail.
Ah, okay. Well, with that, I will, uh, close my comments and, 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 uh, thank everyone for tonight's participation.
And I'm here. Are we, where are we at on closing comments, sir?
I was the first person to give my, give the, uh, council comments for tonight.
Who's that?
Mr. Keller.
Thanks.
Uh, I kind of have to echo, um, Councilman Jacobson. Uh, this is a good opportunity for us to kind of set a standard of, of how we're gonna go about this. Um, so, uh, as being in, in her shoes before I had a kid leave the faucet on outside for a whole night, I kind of understand her point of view, but also the point of view of, um, the wellbeing of the utility. So, um, I am, uh, proud to be in Alaska and to be in North Pole. I spent two and a half weeks out in lower forty-eight in crazy heat. I missed all the smoke, thank goodness. Um, but I am glad to be here and the freedoms that we, um, that we are here to enjoy. So, um, yeah, and with that, uh, I say have a good week and enjoy the weather. It's beautiful.
Thank you, Mrs. Welch.
Well, uh, just happy to have the mayor back on the line. Yeah, I was wondering what, if I was gonna have to spend my evening somewhere else, um, looking, waiting for things to happen with him. So appreciate that. Thank you for, for, uh, your concern there, Mr. Jacobson also on that. Uh, I'm looking forward to spending a little bit of time with our visitors at the Fire on Ice over there. Um, it's gonna be an interesting one. I might bring my guitar over there and, and join them. They have been encouraging me to do that. Um, other than that, just, uh, enjoy your, enjoy your, your, the fact that you don't have to water your, your vegetables out there every day right now. So enjoy the, the part of that, uh, rain that's coming down, uh, from above and other than that, just be safe as you, as you go about out there.
Thank you, uh, Mr. Skips.
Um, yes, I'll just echo what, um, Councilman Jacobson and Keller said. Well, one thing to that, I know she mentioned something about how she's given the two thousand dollar credit. I guess find out first when that credit stopped. And then she started paid regular payments. So that's what I think I haven't said about that. But other than that, everybody stay safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cromer.
I just want to say, uh, it's good to see the mayor back. Birthday this weekend, had a little bit too much fun, you know what I mean? Um, I can't wait till the fair comes here. I think the July twenty-ninth, so I can get out and have my kid go off a couple rides this year. Um, other than that, have a good summer.
Thank you, Mr. Claus.
Uh, welcome back, Mr. Mayor. Uh, thank you, everyone, for bearing with me this evening.
Did a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Um, so we had, uh, for my demonstration there, uh, three really good, four really good people from the fire department and their captain AJ came over and, uh, they got the, uh, packets, IV packets in me and, uh, got me back stabilized. So, uh, a lot of pain. You know, maybe I got to a point not realizing it. You wouldn't think you'd get dehydrated with all this rain around us, but, uh, that's, uh, one of those things. I just felt that I was slipping away and, uh, thanks to Chief Heineken for, uh, uh, calling him over here for me too. Uh, I haven't had that since, uh, back in October. So, uh, it's one of those things that come from time to time. You start to feel it, so you better get ahead of it. And I'd rather do that than go to the hospital, I have to tell you. I don't think I'd want to step, go to the hospital for anything. Rather die than go there almost. It seems that way. Um, um, gee, I, I can't think, um, cogently right now, so I'm not going to delay us any longer and, uh, ask you guys to, uh, if you get a chance, if you can, you got, uh, ten in the morning or seven in the evening over at, uh, KJNP. That's a big thing for those people to come from all those states. We didn't get the people from Texas or Orlando. Uh, they had to cancel. There are a lot of problems with airlines and things like that. So I'm enjoying Alaska for what I can and, uh, if anybody wants to go to AML to the, uh, summer session, it's in the budget. So do it, enjoy it and, uh, hopefully I'll learn something about the cities working really hard to keep us on track. And it's, uh, something that we have to keep after. It's quite, quite a bit. And I appreciate it and, uh, I don't know where we go next. What's next on the agenda, Madam Clerk? A call for adjournment or what?
Move to adjourn.
Move to adjourn. And if I can, little clock, it says eight forty-six. Thank you. Good night, guys.
Good night, everyone.
Night. Good night.